Good morning, City Manager of Leighton and Council members. Go ahead and take the floor.
Thank you. All right. Good morning, everybody. On the first page, you've got four proclamations and the recognition of our employees that have all received their Mini-MPA certificates. And then on the public agenda, you have three people. On page two, number one would approve the new cultural arts strategic plan that has been a while in the making, a lot of public participation. And there were some changes made after this went to you in workshop. So when we went through the last round, and Lindsay can, we'll talk about that.
And the Arts Council, the Arts Council weighed in pretty heavily, the Arts Council and the board.
Number two would approve the five-year consolidated plan for the use of federal funds from HUD and approve a few supporting documents as well. You should all have received DAB presentations or will receive DAB presentations on that. On page three, number three would approve the use of liquor tax funds for a contract with DECA for inpatient substance abuse treatment beds. And this is related to the homeless.
This is the one that was delayed?
This is, yes, exactly. Yep.
You remember that one too?
Pardon me?
You said there's two beds?
No, there's more than two beds.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you.
Number four would initiate a project to repair the Pawnee Prairie Park shelter and install a security system there. Number five would approve ordinance amendments to establish a coordinated inspection and permitting process for mobile food vendors in the region, not just in Wichita. Number six would approve a community event permit for River Fest. We do this annually. That's all I have on page three. On page four, number one would approve a community unit amendment for land in District Four. There was a valid protest petition, so it would require a supermajority. Number two-
Just clarification, that's supermajority is six of seven for this?
Yes, yes. Number two would approve a conditional use in District Two.
Bob, can you go back to the, and the agenda says five of seven?
I thought it was six of seven. Scott?
It is six of seven.
So it's incorrect.
It's a, it should be five. It's five to override the MAPC recommendation. It's six to go over that.
Oh, it does say, okay, sorry, I missed the top one. My bad. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you. Number two would approve a conditional, conditional use in District Two. It's in front of you because there was no DAB recommendation. It was a three-three tie. That's all I have on four. Nothing on page five. On page six, number four, let me see, number four A, approve an amendment to the owner's representative contract with Garver for the BNR project. This would reflect modifications to the SCADA system and work that they're doing on that. Four B would approve a contract for the preparation of a preservation plan and construction plan for the McAfee Pool House. That's what all I have on page six. On page seven, number eight would approve annual contract for the provision of regional library service. This year, the contract from the state is for $237,000. That's all I have on page seven. Page eight, number 11, would extend the completion deadline for a home-funded housing, a single-family house that's being constructed by Mennonite housing. That's all I have, other than to note there won't be a weekend report this week. We're having technical difficulties, so.
That is the report.
Yes.
I did see that Communications just sent out media advisory regarding our incident with our cybersecurity. Can, shall it be read? Can it be just read, or would you like to address it?
I'm not sure which one you're referring to. We sent something out to our employees, thanking them for all the work that they have put into adapting to the challenges that we've had this week, and also understanding that there's concerns about payroll, and we will, believe we'll be able to make payroll next week, end of next week. Also, concerns about the breadth of the data breach, and we're still in the discovery phases of that. So, and then the other thing is that our website has been updated as of yesterday for more information on service impacts. And I think one of the bigger takeaways from that is that we've had some difficulties with our fare boxes, and so we're in a transit-free environment, or a fare-free environment in transit right now. But again, I encourage everybody to look at our website. We're trying to do everything we can to get information out on service impacts.
Manager, that website is wichita.gov alert.
Yes, thank you.
And I will just go ahead and read just this portion because it was sent out to everyone at 10:00 this morning. So for those that didn't get it, I will just read this portion. It is an update regarding the cybersecurity incident. The city of Wichita values its constituents and prides itself on providing high-quality services to its residents. We regret to report that certain online city services may be unavailable as we thoroughly review and assess an incident that affected some of our computer systems. As part of this assessment, we turned off our computer network. This decision was not made lightly, but was necessary to ensure that systems are securely vetted before returning to service. We will continue providing updates on this matter at wichita.gov alert. And there are several questions that people have asked, and there are answers to those questions. Again, that will be on the website, wichita.gov/alert.
That's all I have.
Council members?
I just wanted to make a comment. I know that the manager and mayor committed to a municipal ID last night. It's my understanding that we haven't had a follow-up since Mayor Whipple had to pause this plan because of the Kansas Legislature banned municipal ID. Could we direct staff to get a presentation of the research done on the ID already and how staff plans to implement the ID? Now, since we haven't done it yet, it's important, but I want to make sure we aren't making commitments that we can't keep. And I'm a little disappointed I have, that we haven't done it yet if we could have been doing it the whole time. In the last few weeks, I've mentioned to the mayor and city manager, even at the last workshop, that I'm tired of learning about plans after the fact. We need to do something better to improve our communication, maybe during the weekly agenda review, because when things are told only to the mayor in public meetings, the council can't follow along.
I understand that. And we have been talking about this for probably at least a year. Mayor Whipple was the one that brought it forward. The, we had a staff committee that's been working on it. There were some complications from state law, but I did share with the council in February that we were working on a library card with a picture that was going to take the ID. And unfortunately, the library board decided not to do that in April. So we're now in the process of looking at an alternative the county has offered to be part of that discussion. But we thought we were going to be able to get this done and through the library, and unfortunately, they chose not to go that direction.
Well, just to be clear, I am completely supportive of the idea and all of that. It was just a little shock to be in the audience with everybody with a commitment from you and the mayor without us being part of that conversation if things had changed with the library. So, I mean, I just think we need to be more clear about making, about communicating about things that are really awesome and would be really good for our community. But I just want to make sure when people are asking us or emailing us about it and we aren't brought up to date on what the status is, that, you know, we can provide accurate information.
I will speak on that. Again, I was not here when this idea came to fruition back, I guess, last year. And I received the notice regarding manager Leighton telling us that there was a possible municipal card through libraries. But unfortunately, that failed through the board. And when the Nehemiah Assembly, the Justice Together individuals, came up with their own ask, they really asked for leadership between city and county to come together and see if there was a solution. And I was really glad to see that Chairman Beatty and County Manager Stoltz are wanting to be part of that solution with a municipal card that may not just be Wichita. I know that this idea is something that Kansas City already has implemented. They began issuing their cards in January of this year. And they allow their card to be, for residents of Kansas City, Missouri, to receive this fountain card. But there are stipulations, again, this is an ID card where applicants must submit several pieces of information. And we're still, again, in the gathering information phase. Our commitment is to be at the table to talk about a municipal card. And again, the fountain card itself up in Kansas City requires that you submit proof of identification, proof of residency, a completed application provided by the Health Department. And as you know, our Health Department is with Cedric County. So again, it does require conversations between the city and the county. And because we don't have anything from our end, it is really a commitment that we will sit together between city and county to talk about this. So council members will know about what we would like to do together as two bodies to help out with, again, the challenge that the Nehemiah Assembly has identified as homelessness and mental health in our community.
Bob, can I ask a question? And I don't want to belabor this or get in the weeds, but it just seems like an obvious question. So the reason it was halted, I think, before was because it was against Kansas statute. Was that correct?
No. Well, we had to do some research because of the Kansas statute, but we just, you just have to be careful how you design the card. So the issue has always been, what's the best mechanism? When we first talked about it, we talked, I think we were too ambitious. We were talking about a card that would allow you to load, you know, to do park and recreation programming through the card, and, yeah, like, almost like a credit card type of arrangement. And so then we pared back, and that's when the staff came back and said, we think the best way to get this implemented is to try to piggyback with a system that's in place right now, and that's the library system. And also the fact that we have multiple locations where people could get IDs. And so we had a simplified approach to trying to get the IDs, but the library board just didn't feel comfortable going that far.
So if I make a statement, will you tell me, of course, when I'm wrong? But so my, what I, what I hear you saying is it's not against Kansas statute to pursue?
If we design it correctly, that's my understanding.
What is the, what?
Voting ID.
Okay, it's for voting ID. That's what their thing is. Thank you.
That's correct. You have to make it clear that it's not, it cannot be used for voting identification.
So that might be something to, if we move down this path, and again, I don't want to get in the weeds and make sausage here, but even to put on that card specifically.
There's law, the law requires you to put certain language on it, and council member whole has referencing that, as well as we've talked about visiting with the Election Commission to make sure that it doesn't look anything like an ID that would be accepted for voter ID, like the state card.
Thank you for entertaining my questions.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I appreciate all the information. This is exactly what I'm looking for before we make public commitments like that. So I'm totally supportive. It just, I would have enjoyed this conversation before it was made in front of 1,000 people or however many people it was. So I super appreciate it. Thanks.
I just want to remind everyone that as council members, there can only be three of us that have conversations before it becomes a Kansas Open Meetings Act violation. And so we do not do anything beyond three individuals or one-on-ones. And it's opportunities like this where we are able to talk and open, and we want to be this open and transparent. And again, we don't do anything behind closed doors. We're just trying to get things to a workable situation where we can have discussions about things.
Could we potentially maybe agree on a process as a council that therefore if a commitment is made, then we just talk about it afterwards at Agenda Review? And I only say that because as an activist, a group of us forced city manager and mayor Brewer to commit to body cameras for law enforcement, and they were the only two up there. And I know they had conversations afterwards, but if, if a mayor and a city manager were to make a commitment, I think if we had the process set up where we talk about it at Agenda Review later, that way council was presented with the commitment that was made, and then we could discuss it. And I only say that because we, we had some other actions in mind if the commitment was not made, and sometimes that may be the case. So if there is a commitment at least made to sit down and talk about it, then at Agenda Review after said commitment is made, then to discuss that in detail, that it was made in front of this group, this is what it is, and kind of go into detail about it.
Could we have it before the commitments made?
Yeah, you'd want to make a, you'd want to discuss it before.
Yeah, because that was my concern. I'm like, well, what if we don't have, what if that commitment was made and like four of us don't support it? We just made this huge commitment to the public that we don't have four votes on.
I mean, if the commitment, if the commitment is-
And I'm not saying that's the case. I just don't want to get, put ourselves in a weird situation.
Yeah. I think if the commitment is that you're going to do it, that's a little different, rather than work on it. I will say mayor Brewer said they were going to do it, and it ended up happening. I think it just depends on the wording, but I would, I would hate to box anybody in to not committing to something to a group. I mean, even if, even if it's an important issue that we care about, there's some things I care about I know we don't have votes for. But I would commit publicly to pushing for it. I just, maybe the, maybe the process is how do we work together at Agenda Review to talk about the commitments that we've made, and especially on a platform like last night where there's more than 1,000 people.
Which was awesome, by the way. It's nice to see that many people want to be part of the solution.
Yeah, I think there is a point to be made there as to, are we making a commitment or are we making a commitment to pursue something and discuss something? So I do think maybe there's a distinction that should be made, maybe not in this particular case or anything, but just overall that we'll look at this, we'll work on it, here are some ideas, and we'll run it by council, because Vice Mayor is right, we do need four votes for any policy that we pursue, and just making sure that we actually have the, you know, the backing to adhere to any commitments that are made. Sometimes five votes. Sometimes five.
Sometimes six.
Well, speaking of Kansas City, I did challenge Mayor Lucas to come to Wichita and have Station Eight because it's better than everything in Kansas City. That's a big commitment right there. Well, he responded and said that he'll let us know when he's down here. I love it.
Thank you, council members. Again, I appreciate this dialogue. And I think that, again, as a council, we're trying our very best to work together and also make sure that it is open and transparent so people can see how it is a lengthier process, but one that needs to happen in order for us to find solutions that help the entire community. So thank you. I think we have a report from Lindsay.
Hello, Mayor, Council Manager. Lindsay Binaca, Director of Arts and Cultural Services with the City Manager's Office. I'll be very brief and just pass it over to introduce John Hale, our General Manager at Century Two with ASM Global. As a reminder, for those who might be watching in, ASM is our operating management company for Century Two. We've been on board just over two years. They came on board in early 2022 for operations. And this is kind of just an annual review of what we learned in '23, how things are going, and just some general updates. So with that, I'll turn it over to John Hale.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Good morning.
Mr. Manager. I am happy to introduce myself. I'm John Hale. I'm the General Manager for ASM at Century Two. And I've got some exciting news to present to you today about Century Two and what's been going on there. Over the last year, we've been happy to report that we now have a full staff in the building. We have our full complement of directors and all the folks that we need to run the building. And we are looking at our staffing model consistently because as business increases or decreases, we can find ways to make sure that we are addressing all of our issues the best way we can for the city. Our staff is also dedicated to continued education. And some of the training that we received over the past year has taken place at the Academy for Venue Safety and Security, the ASM Global Marketing Meeting, as well as ASM's Guest Experience Conference. And this, this training is critical to ensure that we are running a safe and efficient venue for you and our guests. We're hard, working very hard to maximize the utilization of the building. And our goal is to host multiple events without having any kind of adverse effect happening with those different events. And an example of what we're trying to achieve actually happened on October 19th of last year, where we had two sold-out performances of Matt Rife in Concert Hall with 4,000 attendees, at the same time that we were having a fully-plated banquet in Exhibition Hall and a trade show in Expo Hall. Our staff worked very hard to make sure that all three of these events were distinct events and that there was no interference between all of them. And they were successful. And these are the kind of things that we're trying to do to help grow the business in the future for you guys. Century Two is a busy building. As you can see, in 2022, we had 545 event, rental days. In 2023, we actually had 600 event days. That is a 10% increase in the amount of days that the building was rented. Our actual event days where we had customers coming into the building rose from 282 up to 295. So we're looking at ways to increase this by adding more flexibility to our venues like Convention Hall and Exhibition Hall so that we can actually increase those rental days and bring in more business to the building. This slide, it reflects some of the things that I think are the most important about what we've been doing. One of our biggest successes this year was the interplay between Wichita River Festival, American Theater Guild, and ASM Global. We were able to finally bring in the Hamilton to Century Two, which is one of the largest grossing events that we've had at Century Two. It was challenging, but after a couple of really important meetings with the folks, the players, ATG, and River Festival, we found that we could find ways to make those events happen all at once. And it was a challenge, but working with these organizations was something I'm proud of. And it was important to show that we could have both River Festival and a major event like Hamilton happen in the building. Our events team also worked really, really hard during some of these events. Like Matt Rife, during the Matt Rife event, where we had two shows back-to-back, we were concerned about how we were going to get clients in and out of the building. We created a space outside of the concert hall where the Jester statue is. We called it the Jester Courtyard. And we created an area where people could have drinks, entertain themselves. We had some yard games there. So the people who came to the second show weren't just sitting in line outside waiting to come into the show. They could actually entertain themselves and then come in, and it was really successful. And then other things that our marketing department is doing is you can see the letters that we have for people to pose in front of. We have a chalkboard and a bunch of interactive things that allow people to have more of an experience, an immersive experience with the shows, rather than just, I'm coming to the show, and then I leave and I go home. Trying to build a way to make these people have a good memory of coming to Century Two. Our concession stands also have been upgraded in the way they look and the equipment that we are currently using. First impressions really matter. When our guests approach a well-designed and visually appealing concession stand, it creates a positive impression for them. Clean, modern, and inviting spaces signal that we care for our guests. Customers not only enjoy the surroundings more, but they also perceive the quality of the services to be greater. So when we're hosting an event at Century Two, we're really cognizant about the fact that we're representing not only you, but also all the citizens of Wichita. So we do our best to make sure that quality is in everything that we do. To summarize, investing in the aesthetics of Century Two, the paint, the finishes, all of that is super important to making sure that we have a good place for folks to come. Additionally, we have invested in more points of sale. We have a very aggressive number of sales positions so that when our clients come and our guests are there, they're not waiting in line for a long time to get a beverage or a food item. They can get in and out. Makes the experience a lot better for them. Our tenant organizations continue to be a centerpiece at Century Two. They're both, both of them are attracting lively audiences. It seems like the crowds are coming back to the shows. Wichita Symphony had a very impressive season last year, and lots of guest artists came into town, as well as the local musicians who are very talented as well. Music Theater continues to present some of the best Broadway series shows in the U.S., so we're very happy to have them. Also, both of these organizations are very, very deeply involved in local arts for the youth of our community, so very important to us to have. When we look at ticketing and our revenue in the building, I want to point out three really- really, really important events that we hosted at Century Two in 2023. I spoke earlier about ATG and Hamilton coming. It was a long time in coming to Century Two. We had to reschedule because of the pandemic, but when they finally got here, it was very successful. We had 17 shows, 26,000 patrons came to see the show, and it is the highest grossing show at Century Two since ASM has taken over management. Live Nation brought Matt Rife, a comedian who hit it really big on the internet during the pandemic, and his shows sold out very quickly. His first show sold out in less than a minute, and then his remaining show, which we added a second show, sold out in just about, I think it was like six or seven minutes, and it was sold out as well. So he did a really good job bringing in that. And that is with our partner, Live Nation, who we reached out with, with ASM. ASM Global also has a partnership and a relationship with Outback Productions, who brought us LeAnn Morgan. Her show was very well-received, and we, we were happy to have that, because those are kind of the windfall events that help us have events in between the time where our long-term clients are utilizing the space. They're very fast to get in, we can have a lot of people come and see the show, have a good economic value, and also still maintain our relationship with our clients like Music Theater and Symphony. This slide reflects our convention, trade show, and consumer show segment. Here, our business continues to be strong. We actually had over $1 million worth of revenue coming from this, this segment last year. These events not only bring dollars into the facility itself, but shows like the Wichita Area Builders Association Home Show is a catalyst for the construction industry in town. A lot of their, their vendors find that they get a good percentage of their business for the rest of the year from the show that we present at Century Two. Cars for Charities Holiday Galleria, which is presented by the Junior League of Wichita, the Kansas Sunflower Swap Meet, all raise money to support local charities in Wichita and Cedric County. Consumer shows like the ICT Comic Con, Brick Fest, Women's Fair are all events that enhance the lifestyle and culture in Wichita, so we're very happy to have those in the building. Let's talk a little bit more about the Matt Rife effect that we had. Not only was Matt Rife a really successful show ticketing-wise, but we were also able to do the benefit from the concession sales. If, if you take a look at the numbers, almost 10% of our annual concession sales were credited to the Matt Rife Show. That was because we were able to activate those extra spaces and create those environments around the building to pull in folks a little early before the show, they could get there, have a drink, socialize with people, then after the show, they could also hang out, talk about the show. It's really a great way to create this environment where you build these memories and encourage people to come back to the building. Saver, which actually started working for us at the beginning, or at the end of last year, right in the last quarter, did pretty well, and we're looking to increase the amount of food and caterings that we offer at Century Two. The staff at Saver is really well-versed in doing the convention work, so we're happy to have that. But not only are we looking at how we can sell tickets, but we're also looking at how we can help our clients sell tickets. I want to stress that the success of our building depends on the success of our clients. At Century Two, we've moved beyond the walls of our facility in an effort to attract and retain the attention of our guests. We've actually worked hard in the, in the world of social media to make that happen, and we believe that social media is a very important avenue for helping our guests, because social media has become a really critical component in the way people purchase things. Engaging with our guests on social media allows us to market events, it allows us to issue special announcements, and promote behind-the-scenes content. We are also able to reach a broader, a broader market. Social media really reaches out to a younger demographic that we have normally not been able to bring in the building, and we're trying to encourage folks to look at the arts, to look at the convention, and look at the things that we do in the building. And our audience's ability to post reviews, voice concerns, and complaints is invaluable for improving our programming and creating a space that's really inclusive for everyone and all of our guests. More traditionally, we've moved to about $19,000 worth of grassroots and billboard, traditional type of advertising. We've been reaching out to a lot of our, our clients and asking them if they would like us to do marketing buys and assisting them with that, which has worked out pretty well. Our work on Facebook has been really effective. We've seen a good growth in Facebook and in Instagram because we've been engaging consistently with both Instagram and Facebook platforms, and those are places where we're finding that we're getting a good return on investment for, for those investments that we're making. Also, we are using our eBlasts to send out special packages and discount codes to folks. We track those codes, and you can see that we, we received about 5,700 replies from those. Each one of those replies from that, those kind of interactions was about $66 worth of value, so almost $400,000 in revenue that we made from eBlasts alone. So working to really, really leverage that kind of social marketing. I know you've all heard about parking at Century Two at least once. We were able to implement paid parking last year. There was a little bit of resistance to the program, but throughout the year, through a lot of really good communication and information, some help from, from our social media folks and our marketing folks, we actually had about 32,000 interactions with our parking, which resulted in a nice little revenue stream for the building. We are currently working to install a kiosk that will allow people to pay with cash instead of having to use their credit cards and their phones, which will help us address one of the major issues that folks had with the parking. Regarding building improvements, so you guys last year approved a 10-year plan to start working on some issues in the building, and we have started working with Public Works to get a lot of those things going. Expo Hall has an HVAC system that's been plagued with problems for a couple of years, and that has been one of our major focuses on this. We've inspected and addressed issues with every single air conditioning unit on Expo Hall, and we are currently in the process of replacing four of them completely. Should be done by the end of July. Previously mentioned, we have a lot of improvements to our catering and our concessions that has made us more efficient and more appealing to our clients. We are adding options in Exhibition and Convention Hall to upgrade and modify those rooms so that they're suitable for a greater variety of shows, allowing us to book more events into the building. And in response to client feedback about the Wi-Fi at Century Two, we are actually quadrupling the number of access points and increasing the bandwidth into the building so that folks can use their phones in that building and do some, some more, more interaction on the internet in the building. One of the things that was a request from clients as well was to upgrade the carpet in Concert Hall. Last time any of you were in Concert Hall, it was getting a little dingy. We are in the process of that, and that should be complete by the end of June, so we're pretty happy. What is enlisted on here is actually a project that was managed by the Public Works Department. That's the roof completion. I want to thank Public Works for all the work that they did on the roof project. They did a great job, and it was completed, and it's a beautiful thing, so. All righty, financial subsidy. So I'm happy to report that last year, we requested $980,000 in subsidy. Because of the windfall of the Matt Rife Show and the LeAnn Morgan and some of the great performances that we had and the overperformance on those things, we were actually able to return $112,000 of that subsidy back to the city, so we didn't use that. I'll caution you that that is not something that I can guarantee will happen every year. We will do our best to make sure that that happens, but depending on whether or not we have a big show or not during the year, there may be some adjustments to the subsidy that need to happen, but we are very happy to be able to do that in our second year with you guys. Finally, challenges about Century Two. It's no surprise that we continue to find problems with the aging infrastructure in Century Two. Steps are being taken to update and replace aging equipment, but more and more, we're finding things that are broken farther down the line than we thought and having to spend some time working on those, because they've either failed or need to be replaced. We also continue to encounter the inability to provide space for our new clients due to the long-term relationships that we have with our existing clients. It's a difficult issue to resolve because we value our existing clients, but we do need to expand our book of business and bring in new business to be competitive. So we continue to work with Visit Wichita, Susie Santo and her folks, and our clients on a booking policy that will address the needs of our long-term clients, providing them with space that they need, as well as still having opportunities to bring in new business. One of our issues is Concert Hall. It is limited in the amount of days that we have available. We have two tenants that utilize the hall very, very extensively, and so we're working with them to find ways to activate Convention Hall next door and to use the hall that, in Concert Hall, when they're not using it. So really good cooperation there amongst a lot of groups trying to make these, these limitations work. And as always, we're going to continue to find ways to decrease our costs, to increase our efficiencies. We've been able to create some new revenue streams, the parking, our concessions has been doing really well, but there will come a time when we will run out of room in there, so we have done some market research, and our research shows that we are still on the low end of rental rates, and that it may be something in the future where we consider actually raising the rent on the building. I stand for any questions.
Well, not a question, but a comment. I do appreciate the work for the new kiosk. Yeah, parking, that's got to be one of the top five email gathering issues that I've had in my time on council, so I do appreciate that, and that just reflects our, you know, our desire to really kind of work with the constituency that we have out there, many of whom are elderly, don't trust technology. After this last week, I trust technology even less than I did before, so I do appreciate that aspect of it.
Absolutely.
John, your subsidy's been decreasing year after year. What do you expect it to be, or what did you ask for this year?
This year, we actually asked for an increase over last year of about $130,000 more than last year, because we do not have a big blockbuster show like Hamilton on our schedule at this point in time.
Okay, so a little over a million?
Yeah, this year is a little over a million.
Okay, thank you.
I do think the key number on that chart is what our subsidy was before ASM took over.
All right, thank you.
John, thank you, and AJ, thank you for the work. Definitely working to make it a more user-friendly, customer-friendly space. That's all we have, Mayor. Thank you.
I almost said.